It is 9:03, and I'm going to call this meeting of the Planning Commission to order. We have six members, so we have a quorum established. I'm going to start by introducing a new Planning Commission member, Sam Gomez. Sam is going to be replacing Joe Spano, who left to join the COSA-DC Board. We're going to miss Joe, but thankful that he's on to other service within the city, so. Mr. Gomez, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
First item is the consent agenda. The Planning Commission may request for a consent agenda item to be moved to the regular agenda for presentation and public comment; otherwise, the consent agenda will be considered in one vote. All items on the consent agenda have been recommended for approval by the staff. With no opposition received to date, since some of the consent agenda may require a public hearing, the Commission will accept public comment on any item on the consent agenda in one public hearing. The only item on the consent agenda is the consideration of the January 24 Planning Commission meeting minutes. Do I have any comments?
We did have one change to the minutes. Item E says that I made a motion and a second on that case, so just need to get that corrected. With that change, I would move to approve.
Okay. We have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? I'm sorry, I need to go back. I need to open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on the consent agenda items, please come forward. Okay, I'm going to close public comment. Now, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve pending the change that Luke noted. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Six-zero. Okay, regular agenda subdivision plaits. The Planning Commission has final authority for approval. Appeals may be directed to the City Council. PP 2201 preliminary plat Prestonwood addition, request for approval of a preliminary plat Prestonwood addition located south of Appaloosa Trail and Sherwood Way being 67.392 acres.
Good morning, Commissioners. Rafael Alvarado with the Planning Staff. So this is the Prestonwood addition, 67.392 acres. It is outside of city limits, south of Sherwood Way and Appaloosa Trail. There is a proposed annexation and a master thoroughfare plan amendment for this general area, and that is currently underway. Like I mentioned earlier, it's outside of the city limit, so it doesn't have a zoning district yet. It would eventually become residential. The vision plan indicates that being neighborhood. This is the preliminary plat itself. And staff concluded an analysis and found that this preliminary plat is in accordance with the purpose statement found in Chapter 2 of the subdivision ordinance. The staff recommends approval of PP-2201. The Prestonwood addition being 67.392 acres, subject to two conditions of approval. The first is the approval of this preliminary plat lot sizes and roadway configurations is subject to approval of the requested annexation for this land and concurrent master thoroughfare plan amendment which relates to minor collectors Appaloosa Trail and Pinion Ridge Drive. The second condition is prior to final signatures, a preliminary drainage study shall be submitted. Do the Commissioners have any questions for staff?
Any questions for the staff? Thank you, Rafael. We're going to open it up for public comment. If you wish to speak on this case, please come forward, state your name and address or single-member district, please.
Good morning, Russell Gully with SKG Engineering. Would just be happy to answer any questions and ask your approval of this preliminary plat as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Gully. Anyone else wish to speak on this case? I'm going to close public comment. Anyone wish to share their thoughts or make a motion?
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented by the staff. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? PP 2202 revised preliminary plat Fairway Downs, request for approval of a revised preliminary plat Fairway Downs being 76.55 acres located southeast the intersection of Country Club and South Ratliff Roads.
Thank you all. Jeff Fisher, Chief Planner. Next case today is a revised preliminary plat of Fairway Downs subdivision. You've seen this before. There was a couple different submissions on this, and the main sticking point was having a stubout to connect to future development, mainly to the east but also to the west. So when they first came in, I believe it was back in June, they didn't have a stubout towards Ratliff or towards the east. They came back with the one on the west, not with the one on the east. So the second time around, it was approved. There was a preliminary plat that was signed. But we are coming back today. The only difference today is a phasing plan to basically show the three different phases. I believe the third phase, there's some issues with getting water transferred. They're on Millerville Dual right now and moving through, but staff is moving through that process with them. So it's really just to, for you all to take a look at that, and then this will supersede any previous approvals today. Fortunately, when we zoomed out on this, I've tried several attempts, but I'm going to provide some zoom-ins in a minute. The Phase 2 is the black area, so let me just zoom in a little bit closer, and I've divided this by north and south for you. So on the north side, you can see Bunker Drive with a stubout. That was added after the, in the second submission, or excuse me, in the first submission afterwards, and then the last submission, there's the stubout for Rough Drive as well. So they satisfied all the conditions. Phase 1 is furthest to the north, so that's looking at Country Club. You can see those new streets, Divot Circle and all of those different names, Bunker Drive. And then this is going to be Phase 2, and then Phase 3 is the area over here. So if all goes as intended, they'll come in with final plaits in the future for this. One of the notes of approval is that this will have to be annexed. These are half-acre lots roughly, and so to get on to full city services, they'll need the one acre eventually, so that's just a note there, as well as zoning. So we should be expecting at some point in the future an annexation and a zoning, but not yet. That's really it. I'm not going to go over all the policy statements because we've already, they've already conformed with that. Five conditions of approval. Prior to plat signatures, submit a revised plat with the full name identifying, just say preliminary plat of Fairway Downs. Per the CV-COG, change Ratliff Road to South Ratliff Road on the plat, and then Fairway Lane needs a different street name because there's already a Fairway Drive, so they can note that on their revised plat. 911 addressing, request a number 3. And then number 4, just a note again about prior to final plating, that the lots must be annexed into the city and meet appropriate zoning and lot sizes. And then preliminary drainage study as well. In addition, comprehensive plan amendment and zoning will be required to bring that into the city for, to allow a future development. Any questions or comments? Sounds pretty straightforward.
So Jeff, just doing the revised preliminary plat, we're not doing the annexation. Is that correct?
That's right.
Thank you.
Or the zoning.
Or the zoning.
Correct.
Okay. Anyone else have questions for the staff? Has the preliminary plat changed since we approved it?
The only change, I understand, is that they've shown a phasing plan of 1, 2, and 3 in those different colors and patterns.
Okay.
But generally, the lot sizes stayed identical, and the stubouts have been addressed and satisfied.
Great. All right. Anyone else have questions for the staff? Excuse me. I'm going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this case, please come forward, state your name and address or single-member district.
Good morning, Commission. Casey Poerner here, developer. Just wanted to see if you have any questions for me. It has changed some, but primarily, like Jeff said, it is the same. The Phase 3 is all about the Millers View Dual and the city taking that piece, and we were working with the water utilities to do that portion. Took us a long time to do that, but that's why things have changed somewhat, is because of that process.
Okay.
So if you have any questions, love to answer them.
Anyone have questions for Mr. Poerner? Thank you, sir.
Oh, I did have one more thing. I would ask that the Fairway Lane, since we had it preliminary-platted before, if we strike that requirement of changing that from the 911 because it's confusing? We did have it, it's on this, this is the old signed off plat. It's Fairway Lane on there as well, so I request that, please.
Yeah, I might open that up. I don't know who's here to speak on behalf of that, but I think there was a, the Phase 2 also had that condition as well, and then I think the preliminary plat got signed. So the question is if, can that be done through, Brendan, through the final plating? Or does that have to, if that comment is there, did we need to address that now? I think that was the same question as before. In other words, if it's just a preliminary plat as a blueprint, can they, as long as they fix the final plat, but I'm not, I'd like to get our...
If I may, it doesn't have to necessarily be done on this phase. Typically, it can, they don't have to name the streets as they may change, so that does not have to be a condition of this. At the time of final plat, it will have to be in accordance with the 911 naming program or system, but they can coordinate that with that. So it, the street names on here are just preliminary.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm going to close public comment. Anyone wish to make a motion or share their thoughts?
Before we do that, can we, I think, maybe prudent to take, it would be three conditions of approval. We move number 3 to a note, and we just say prior to final plating, per city 911 addressing, change Fairway Lane to a different street name. Is everyone comfortable with that? So in other words, that wouldn't be subject, a requirement of this plat, but it would still be required of final plating. So it'd be three conditions. We move number 3 to a note.
Okay.
Jeff, I think there's one other condition on the next page, the drainage, the preliminary drainage study.
Oh, Aaron.
Four conditions.
Thank you, Aaron. He's right, four conditions, and then number 3 is moved as a note. Thank you.
So our motion to approve would strike Condition 3 and make it a note? Is that correct?
That's right. Prior to final plating.
Okay.
Move to approve is stated by Jeff, we're moving, we're moving Condition 3 to a note.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented by the staff. Moving Condition 3 to notes. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? RP 2207 replat of Track 2, Section 2, TJAC addition, request for approval of a replat of Track 2, excuse me, Track A2, Section 2, TJAC-AK addition, being 1.01 acres southwest of South Bryant Boulevard and West Avenue N, and approval of a variance from Chapter 10382 to maintain 52-foot wide pavement width for West Avenue N.
Thank you, Chair Stribling. Our next case today is replat of Track A2, Section 2, TJAK addition. It's 1.01 acres. It's got dual zoning, ML and CGCH, southwest of Bryant and West Avenue N, District 3, Harry Thomas and the Rubistah Neighborhood. So this is the south Wiener Schnitzel property, and there's a potential for future development, so they want to just take the Wiener Schnitzel property, simply cut it into 2, and then the second business would go in on that property there. So replat of one lot into 2, and then as part of that, because the, that lot flags up, goes all the way up 30 feet wide, it flags to West Avenue N, variance is requested to maintain 52 feet of paving for West Avenue N for that 30-foot flag area in lieu of 64 feet. In addition, staff is recommending a sidewalk on South Bryant Boulevard with a note to clarify some options for them regarding the sidewalk. We'll get to that in a minute. So this is the flag on the left picture as you're looking south from Avenue N, so it kind of goes deep into there.
That's the wrong pictures. Those are, that's the wrong case.
Yes, my apology for the second picture, but it is the Wiener Schnitzel to the south.
Both of, yeah, both those photos were the wrong case.
Okay. So conformity with the comprehensive plan and purpose statements, the commercial development is consistent with the commercial future land use. That's pretty straightforward. Avenue N is curbed and gutted on both sides, so it already functions adequately. The new street ordinance that you all looked at and approved minus some changes on local roads, you had recommended approval of the new standards on arterial and collector roads, and so a new major arterial road would be 56 feet, so it's going to be very close to that at 52 already. It's an infill development. Most of the traffic's going to come off of Bryant anyway, and that's a major arterial there, so just for that 30-foot portion, it'd be cost prohibitive for the applicant to have to pave just that narrow section. The existing curbs would have to be removed. So we're in support of the variance. Pardon me on that. The sidewalk issue, I guess, is TechDOT is coming in with a plan for sidewalks, but we now understand that where there's asphalt already, it would be more appropriate not to have to, instead of having to put concrete in, if city engineering and any task inspector was comfortable, they could use the existing asphalt to serve as a sidewalk. It'd be a little less expensive for them, so that's just an option for us. We do recommend the plat with four conditions, and I just want to go over it very quickly, but also talk about the sidewalk note and how we've worded that, so it's in the record. So tax certificate number 1, submit a revised plat, 4, replat in Section 2, TJAC addition, just subject to previous naming conventions, install a sewer main and service connections, and then again, if you give the variance, they won't have to make the minimum pavement on Avenue N. So normally, we argue, we would defer this anyway as a note to building permits for the sidewalk because it's a commercial development. We don't know how it's going to be facilitated, but we'll basically have two options. They can provide written verification from a task inspector or the city engineer that they may utilize the existing asphalt adjacent to South Bryant for purposes of the sidewalk. I'm not the engineer here. Mr. Gatlin might be in if he has any, needs to clarify that. But basically, my understanding is if that slope is generally consistent and it's wide enough that they could use that existing sidewalk alternatively, then they would have to pave the sidewalk to street standards if it doesn't pass. So at least it gives them, hopefully, a more affordable option on that. And that concludes staff's presentation. Any questions or comments?
Anyone have questions for the staff?
I just want to make one clarification. Not that, on the quote "new ordinance," that is a proposed ordinance. Y'all did make recommendations to City Council. City Council has not heard that ordinance for street widths and that, so just want to make it clear on public record that that's just a proposed ordinance, not a new ordinance at this time.
Thank you. Thank you, Aaron.
Correct. And I think that would be one more possibility, but that we would still recommend approval regardless, just the fact that those roads are sufficient to service the area.
Thank you, Jeff. I'm going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this case, please come forward, state your name and address or single-member district.
Good morning. My name is Carson Stevens. I'm with Carter Fincher's Engineering for any questions, comments, or concerns.
Anyone have questions? Thank you, sir.
Carson, I did talk to Erica last week, and she said she was comfortable. Are y'all, is that changed though? Are y'all still comfortable with that condition on the sidewalk?
Yes, we are.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else wish to speak on this case? I'm going to close public comment. Anyone wish to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve with a variance.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. The staff's recommendations, including the variance, all in favor, say aye. Aye? Aye? Opposed? Six-zero. Conditional uses, the Planning Commission has final authority for approval of conditional uses. Appeals may be directed to the City Council. Item A, amendment to CU-1604, 2309, 2315, and 2317, South A&amp;M Avenue. Request for approval of amendment to conditional use, CU-1604, to allow additional accessory structures, including a bus barn, the single-family NA, excuse me, in the single-family residential zoning district located at 2309, 2315, and 2317, South A&amp;M.
Okay, so in 2016, y'all had approved a conditional use on this property. At that time, schools were, and churches both, were no longer allowed in RS-1 by right. You needed a conditional use. Since that time, elementary schools, which is what this is, are allowed. So this is a Catholic elementary schools, I understand, plus church and religious places of worship, all as part of the same complex. And so in 2016, neither of those were allowed, and they were adding a school building, and so y'all had approved a conditional use. Nothing's changed since 2016. The original school and the church, by the way, were 1960, so they've been primarily in that neighborhood for many, many years. They now want to add a bus barn for one of their buses, so after the bus drops off the kids, it's just for one bus, about 900 square feet, and they would park that bus on the property. They propose several different alternatives. They're recommending the one closest to the south end of the property, which we're not in support of, but we are in support of the other two options, so I'm going to go over those in a minute. With the original approval, the condition was that it needed to amend the concept plan for any changes. We've reworded that now in the future to say minor changes like this could be approved by the Planning Director, but this would just be to allow them to go forward today. So it's just for a bus barn, and one of the options has a very small little maintenance shop that's next to the bus barn, so essentially, quote-unquote, accessory structures in addition to the existing approval. RS-1 conditional use for religious institution is what's there now. This was a large area because it's such a big property. 64 notices were mailed out. Staff didn't receive any in support, but, excuse me, one in support, three in opposition. So this is the full concept plan on the site. So this is what they want to do. In order for it to fit the screen, if you flip it sideways, that corner, the bottom is the south. So the proposed new bus barn, Option 3, is what they want. They would have to pave an additional driveway that would have an entrance on A&amp;M and on Oxford. Staff doesn't like that for a number of reasons. There's some functional aspects there. Oxford being a local road, it's very close to homes and having, even though it's one bus, secondly, you're going to see it more from that location. And so just having everything set back like the rest of the building. So 1 and 2 seems like a better option. So here's 1. 1 would have the bus barn as well as the portable building next to it, just for maintenance and storage. It's surrounded by trees. It's very hard to see from A&amp;M. From Oxford, it would be, so we were going to put a condition that they have to put a, run, extend the privacy fence, which is, you can't see it here, but there's a cedar gate on the north side of that storage building, and we just run that all the way to the end of the corner here, the curb, and that way, the homes that are on this side on Oxford won't be able to see most of this. At least 6 feet would be covered. So we believe that's probably the best option, just because it's so far back, and again, with the fence there, it shouldn't be too much of an eyesore, and that area serves more as the rear yard. Option 2 is the same, exactly the same thing, only the storage unit isn't there, so they would have to remove one tree and then push the tree to the left. Again, that tree still will be planted and will provide some screening. Here's Option 3. This is the one we don't want. We understand that that's their preferred option, it just keeps it out of the way from everything, but it's just very close to the corner. They would provide some zero escaping there as well, as well as a 6-foot-high cedar gate all the way around it, so it would provide some screening from it. My apologies about the pictures this morning, but I think you guys have been there, and I do have them on my computer if you need any further information, but I think this is, we all know that site. The church and school have existed since 1960, so I'm not going to go over that too much, but really, I think Option 3, just being so close to the street, is kind of the concern that we had. Approval of a conditional use is our, of an amendment to the conditional use is our position. Allow the accessory structures, including a bus barn in a single-family RS-1 zoning. For Option 1 or 2, they want to have the maintenance structure or not have the maintenance structure, doesn't really matter to us, subject to the five conditions of approval. So they stay compliant with the RS-1 underlying zoning standards, because that's the district it's in. We've amended this condition from the last time in 2016. Overall, site use shall be in accordance with the concept plan, but minor deviations may be approved. If they come in with another bus barn or another accessory building, they don't have to keep coming here every time. We can look at this through site plan review. 3, any future development along the west side property line, which is going to be where Options 1 and 2 are, they have to put a screen fence. Rather than running it along the alley, just have it run along the, in front of the building. It's going to save a little bit of money and probably get the job done better because it's right there. 4, all new exterior lighting shall be shielded and positioned. There's no proposed lighting, and of course, the applicant shall obtain a building permit from permits and inspections. Now, the question that's probably, you probably asked is, what are the colors and materials of this structure? What's the height of this structure? I have the applicant here. I think it's about 18 feet maximum, so some, half of that's going to be over the fence. We normally would make that condition as a note, and so we would normally review something that minor as through the site plan process. However, you do have the authority as planning commissioners to take a look at that. The school section in the zoning ordinance does talk about quality buildings and materials. It's intended mainly for principal buildings, buildings that aren't screened, et cetera. Nevertheless, that is something for you guys to review, so we just wanted to make sure that was noted on there as well. That concludes our presentation, and we're open to comments and questions. The applicant is here as well.
Thank you, Jeff. Does anyone have questions for the staff?
Jeff, what is the recommendation? Is it Option 2 or Option 1?
1 or 2. It's the same thing, that 1 has the maintenance building beside it, and then 2 would have, wouldn't have the maintenance building, and they'd have to remove a tree and then replace it, but it's generally the same thing in the same location.
So there's, you have a preference? Have y'all recommended?
No, we're recommending 1 or 2. I think in both of those cases, it's going to provide adequate screening from the homes on Oxford and not be as, again, if you're driving along A&amp;M, there's those two big school buildings right there, so right here and right here, so unless you're like standing right there and staring at it, you wouldn't, you know, wouldn't be able to see it as well. But of course, on this corner, not only are you going to see it, but you're going to have the safety issue of just that driveway cutting so close to the site triangle. Is it doable? Sure. Is it back 30 feet? It's out of the site triangle, it is. It's just a little bit, a little bit close, so.
Thank you. Anyone else have questions for the staff? All right, we're going to open it up for public comment.
Good morning, Commission. My name is Kai Frankie. I'm with KFW Architects, and so the Church Building Committee had originally, had the schemes of 1 and 2 location for this bus barn, but the pastor and business manager asked me to explore whether or not that bus barn could go on the south side of the property. I think one of their concerns was backing the bus. The Option 1 and 2 requires backing the bus, would require very little impact on paving and those type of things. The tree issue was important to them, so we were going to just relocate the tree under Option 2. Option 3, the concerns there was just added costs were the paving, the curb cuts, and whether or not that would comply with city engineering, the way it actually curb cuts. The positive thing is, the bus is never backing in that location. It's in and then back out again. It could come in from either direction and exit from either direction. The cost is most certainly an impact on that south side because of the paving and augmentation of the fencing, so. With that, there is, Travis Elementary is just south of this location. Of course, the school district had erected those multip- Of course, the school district had erected those multipurpose buildings. The sidewall on that, on those multipurpose buildings is taller than what's proposed here. We're talking about a sidewall of probably no more than 14 feet, and the ridge being no higher than 18 feet. As far as colors go, if it's a metal structure, most certainly it would, it would blend in with the sandstone building colors that are adjacent to there. If the commission required more permanent finishes, something that would blend in, more, you know, complement the adjacent buildings, then of course, that would be some cost increase that would need to be relayed to the owner and make their decision. I think what we were after was, could we locate this building at any three of these spots? And, or get approval to do so, and then the owner would make their final decision as to cost and where they felt like it would work best for their campus.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
When you park the bus today, where is the bus physically located?
The bus is parked right now. Oh, that's annoying. So.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Right, thanks, man. Yeah.
I don't know what I'm doing here. Which one?
The, the right, right, it's, it's forward.
Better duck, Travis.
What's that?
Better duck.
Okay, so.
There we go.
So the bus is parked right here, right on A&amp;M Street, right here now. A couple of reasons for that. It's, it's, it's good advertisement as far as the school, but it also helps with vandalism because it's up front and center, and so they're very concerned about if it were parked in the back part of the property on the west side, that it might be more susceptible to damage or vandalism, especially with some of the things that are going on with this catalytic converter issues and things.
Sure, didn't think about that.
So that's why, what the, there's a couple of reasons driving this. One, it is a brand-new bus. They would like it to be protected from the elements, but also from theft.
Okay.
And vandalism, so.
Anyone have questions for Kai? Do you have any renderings that, that you could share with us of this proposed structure?
I do not. It was really just starting at, as a feasibility study and things.
Yes, sir.
And so then, in a question with Jeff, in regards to those curb cuts, led us to here today.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Anyone else wish to speak on this case? Okay, I'm going to close public comment and open it up for discussion among the commission I'm, I, I think I, I can under, understand and agree with the staff in terms of the location. The, the location close to the intersection on the south end of the property is really prominent, and for a, for an accessory structure like this, I think it would be more fitting and in keeping with the neighborhood to, to try to tuck it back into the site a little bit. So options one and two, I think, look, look good. The other concern I'd have is, is just trying to blend it in with the neighborhood. Having a, a big metal building prominent on the site is probably not desirable for the, the folks that are immediately close to this property, so I personally would like to see it architecturally similar to the existing structures that are there. Does anyone else have thoughts?
What is the height of the fences around that, Jeff?
Six foot.
Is it six foot or, or tall?
Yes, six feet.
Okay.
And as far as options one and two, I don't think it really, in my opinion, makes a difference to us. I would give the.
I agree.
I, I would give the option back to them based on their cost and based on their, and it's having a, a building external, create some sort of issues going in and out, cold weather eating.
Yes.
So I would leave the, the options, either one or two, back to them, and then we, I don't know if we can approve either or based on their recommendations to us.
I think that makes sense, and I agree. One and two are very similar.
We do believe that would be an option, because we would review this at the site plan when they turn it in for the construction of the building.
Yes, sir.
And make sure that it matches either option one or option two at that time.
Okay.
Also, I don't have a problem with the sandstone metal, if it's a metal building. There's a lot of people that are using the metal for fences, even in that area, so they're used to looking at it, and I don't think that's an issue at all. If that's the route when they're, you know, whatever they decide, if it's something else that's more feasible to build with, but if the metal is the choice, I think that would be fine.
I don't know, I don't know how to go into, you know, I don't want to handcuff anybody with trying to dictate what type of materials they have to use, but I do think that it at least should, should be required to blend in with the adjacent buildings, and I don't know how to say that in a motion, but.
And, and, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to point out, that note that's listed, that's actually in the zoning ordinance, and it already says it'll be consisting with any existing structures, so.
Okay. Okay, so having said that, do you think that a metal building would, would meet the requirements if it was painted the same color, or, you know, I, I don't want to get into the weeds with material specifications, but, you know, I, I think about a 14-foot structure going on this, mid-side walls, that's, that's a pretty tall structure. A six-foot fence isn't going to cover it, so.
So, I mean, it leaves that discretion to the, the planning director to review the samples of materials and colors for approval prior to construction. So if you want to get more specific than that, yeah, you could put it in as, in a condition, but otherwise, that would be up to the planning director.
Anyone else have thoughts they'd like to share? Sam, you got any thoughts?
I got one thought.
Okay.
I'm not sure if it's a great idea, but being that it's commercial, I think it'd be a great idea to do the fence maybe half-stone, half-aluminum. It might blend in more, being it's a commercial building.
Okay.
They've already got, do they have a fence in that area, or no?
Yeah, cedar all the way around.
Cedar fence, I think, is already there.
Are, are you referring to the fence or the sidewall of the building?
The fence.
The fence.
Yeah, I think there's a, I think there's a six-foot cedar fence all the way around the perimeter right now.
Is that right, Jeff, that there, on the site, there's a six-foot cedar fence?
Yes, yes, that's right.
All right, thank you.
Anyone wish to make a motion? Or share their thoughts?
I'll make a motion to approve the, the plan as, as outlined, using either option one or option two, at the discretion of the, of the requesters, and then just to ensure that, you know, it does match the appropriate color scheme.
Okay.
Second.
Just to clarify, would, would, in terms of matching, would you allow a metal-sided building to be constructed, or would you like to see materials that are on the existing buildings?
I would allow a, a metal building, and then if the builders, again, want to use some additional material, leave it up to them. But a metal building, I, you see them all over the place now.
Okay.
And they're, they're looking pretty good.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve as presented, including allowing the, the metal siding. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. My only opposition, just to clarify, is that I'd like to see materials that are more consistent with the existing improvements. I'm, I'm totally in support of adding the structure, so five, one. Okay. CU 2202, 130 Greer Street. Request for approval of a conditional use to allow short-term rental in the single-family residential zoning district located at 130 Greer Street.
Good morning, Commissioner. Kyle Warren, Planning and Development. This is CU 22-02, 130 Greer Street. It is a request for approval of a short-term rental at this location. It is in RS1 zoning, District 1, Hybert, and in the Glenmore neighborhood, near Goodfellow Air Force Base. And this is the zoning map. These are the images of the house. This is the street, as you can tell, RS1 zoned. This is our notification map. We had 19 mailed out, and in this case, one in favor and zero opposed as of this morning, which was kind of interesting.
Usually, it's either, we're usually, we're, we're.
Yeah, I'm, I realize that, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. I just wanted to make sure that we didn't need a, a.
I, I kind of had to put that last. I do apologize for.
No, you're fine. Thank you.
In our rationale, one, impacts minimized. The applicant plans to make no changes to existing structures on the lot and has adequate parking. Two, consistent with zoning ordinance, there are no short-term rentals active within 500 feet of this proposed location, and that's as per our GIS maps. Three, compatible with surrounding area, the rental would be in an RS1 single-family residential zoning area, and it would be rented out to single families thereof, so. Four, effect on natural environment, there are no foreseen adverse effects in the environment. The area infrastructure is already built to accommodate single-family zoning. Five, community need, the short-term rental will address a need for more rentals near Goodfellow Air Force Base, and I will say, there's not many hotels or short-term rentals on that side of San Angelo, so I think this would be a positive in that regard. Six, development patterns, this is a neighborhood, and the short-term rental nature of the house does not impact the home. It is still a single-family residence. And our recommendation is for approval of a conditional use to allow short-term rental at 130 Greer Street, subject to three conditions. One, maintain all off-street parking on the premise. Two, maintain the short-term rental operation in a manner consistent with the zoning ordinance, including a required renewal after the first year, then every two years thereafter. Three, we'll need a fire marshal inspection and a building inspection for a change of occupancy. And, any questions?
Anyone have questions for the staff? All right, we're going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this case, please come forward, state your name and address or single-member district. All right, we're going to close public comment.
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented by the staff. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Six, zero. CU 2203, 3029 West Borghard Avenue. Request for approval of a conditional use to allow a telecommunication facility with tower and related equipment in the neighborhood commercial zoning district located at 3029 West Borghard Avenue.
Thank you, commissioners. Jeff Fisher, again, chief planner. The next case today, this is for a new telecommunication tower at this address. Just for proximity, HEB is just over here, and so this is Avenue N and College Hills and Borghard. This is in District 5, our new council member, Karen Hosey Smith, in the Santa Rita neighborhood. Zoning is CN. We sent out 25 notices. We got one phone call. I'd say they were in support, they weren't opposed to it. I believe the person was representing one of the owners, I think either at 2 or 14, but they didn't submit anything, so I got it counted as zero. We did get one late letter in on yesterday in opposition from this owner at number 10 here, so that's where we're at. Here's a full concept plan to explain. So back late last year, the applicant had, permits had flagged, a telecommunication tower about 58 feet that was put on the property. The tower is, I'll share that in a minute on the photo, but basically, the, the tower was very close to where the new tower is going now, but they, they were issued a violation, and they didn't realize, I guess they needed a permit, so they came in, and, and they are following the rules. The owner of the wireless internet computer store here, Power Systems Computers, this is the tower for their business, so it's going to be roughly the same height. It was 58 feet, now it's 60, and it's the furthest back from the street as possible, so it meets all the setbacks. It's got to be 50 street, 50 feet from a street right-of-way, 20% of the height of the tower, which is 12 feet, and they're 28 feet from the lot line, and they're over 100 feet from the nearest residential property, so they meet all the, all the requirements. This is the example of the tower. It's going to be co-locatable, which is important to us. We don't want to just approve these like candy and allow proliferation of these. If one tower can have multiple providers like Verizon and AT&amp;T, which is what this tower will be able to do, then, then we're in support of it. Conditional use process does allow telecommunication towers, and there are other towers in this area, although not within 500 feet. See some of the photos, so there's the one that's out there now. I talked to Mr. Petty, the applicant and the business owner of, of PowerNet, and he said the tower will roughly look identical to what the, the one is out there now. Staff reviewed pursuant to zoning ordinance, Sections 208 for conditional uses and 426 for telecommunication towers. The property is located in the CN district, which allows a variety of commercial uses already. It's located furthest away from the street, it complies with all setbacks, and again, it's a very incremental height difference from the current tower to the, to the new tower. So staff recommends approval of CU 2203 for a telecommunication facility, tower and related equipment, subject to five conditions. No more than one telecommunication tower is allowed on the site. These are fairly standard conditions we've, we've done before. Tower shall not exceed a height of 60 feet. That matters, because if they came in and wanted to do 120 feet, first of all, we would have said no. As you go further back, there is a residential neighborhood, but we feel at 60 feet, it's appropriate to serve the intended purpose, as long as they don't go any taller than that. And then also, they wouldn't be able to meet the setbacks if they went taller. The proposed telecommunication facility shall comply with 426 of the ordinance. Petitioner shall provide final latitude and longitude coordinates. Shall be co-locatable, which can support a minimum of two antenna arrays from two separate wireless communication system providers. And exterior lighting shall be shielded. I think that may not have been in there, so cross off that last sentence. And the applicant shall provide the planning director and airport director with a signed approval from the Federal Aviation Administration, FAA, if necessary. Airport hadn't responded to us. We could follow up before permitting, but generally speaking, they're nowhere near the flight path of the airport, so it should be fine. Any questions or comments on this one?
Any questions for the staff? All right. Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Open it up for public comment. Again, if you're wishing to speak, please state your name and address or single-member district.
Hello, my name is Ramona Oliver, and my address is 3034 West Borghard. I believe I'm in the District 5, and I believe I did send an email to, to the Planning Commission, and that should be to, to oppose, but I don't know.
Okay.
Maybe it might have gotten lost, but anyhow, I'm not.
Can I get your address again, ma'am? I'm sorry to interrupt.
3034 West Borghard.
Okay.
I believe I'm across the street.
Okay.
And I'm not here to stop progress whatsoever or oppose technology itself, but I am here to express a concern for the health and the well-being of the, of the neighborhood. We know that there's a massive literature and case studies providing high levels of scientific certainty of health effects caused by the frequency of the EMS exposures, and therefore, I am opposed of conditional use to allow the telecommunication facility and tower related to the, and related equipment to the neighborhood. I, I would, I'm here today to ask you to vote no, or at the very least, I don't know how, if y'all table or, or maybe postpone your vote until you're able to study this, the case studies and, and look at the health effects of, of these towers. And at this time, since I am not an expert, I'd like to introduce Dr. Mindy Willis.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Mindy Willis, and I've had a holistic medicine practice in San Angelo since 1992. To briefly establish credibility, I have a Bachelor of Science in Anatomy degree, is a doctor of chiropractic. I'm certified in applied clinical nutrition, as well as functional nutrition therapy, and I agree with Ramona Oliver that I oppose the installation of this telecommunications facility and tower. facility and tower. And I think you guys should maybe rethink all of the towers and where you're locating them. As Ramona said, there's a massive amount of scientific literature that provides proof of the adverse health effects caused by EMF field exposures. These health effects have been well researched and documented since at least 1972, yet no federal agency provides any regulatory guidelines, so it's therefore left to local governments and planning commissions like this one to stand in the gap in protecting their communities. For documentation, I have here a summary of verifiable health effects. And this was compiled by Dr. Martin Paul, PhD, professor emeritus of biochemistry at Washington State University. Dr. Paul presented this information to the NIH in 2018, and you can find his entire speech online. He gave detailed warnings regarding the health effects of 3 and 4G radiation, and he explained how 5G was being rolled out without even a single biological test to prove its safety. His analogy was, this would be like making a new drug or vaccine available to the public without properly providing safety and efficacy.
Thank you.
Oh, wait, they just did that. Okay, different topic. Anyway, you may find it of interest that the final statement in Dr. Paul's speech to the NIH was, quote, "The rollout of 5G is absolutely insane," unquote. And I absolutely agree. I'm going to briefly list eight pathophysiological effects caused by EMF exposures. Number one, nervous system and brain effects. Number two, endocrine gland effects. Number three, oxidative stress and free radical damage. Number four, single and double strand breaks in cellular DNA, leading to germline mutations for future generations. Number five, elevated levels of programmed cell death. Number six, cardiac effects. Number seven, lowered male and female fertility, and in fact, some studies have shown that sperm counts have dropped more than 50% throughout technologically advanced countries, and there are 15 different mechanisms of cancer causation. There have also been multiple studies showing the adverse health effects of living near cell towers, so instead of taking your time by listing all of these, I'm providing you with just a few studies you can read for yourselves, and there's literally hundreds, if not thousands, of studies online, worldwide, that you can look at. So suffice to say, if you live near a cell tower, I would strongly advise you to take steps to try to mitigate the damage caused by chronic EMF exposure, or I would advise you to move. Now, I realize that most people are ignorant of what I've told you this morning, which is exactly why I'm here, so now that you know the facts, I hope that you will make the right decision and not allow the installation of this facility and tower, and I thank you for your time and for your consideration.
Doctor, I had a question for you, actually, just as staff, for our learning as well.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a, two questions, actually. Is there a minimum safe distance that you would recommend if you're from a residential to...
Jeff, if you would, let me address one thing. I think this has come up before, but just as a reminder and to caution the board, there are federal preemptions on state and local governments when you're making a decision premise directly or indirectly on environmental effects of radio frequencies, so that should not be a basis of your decision here today, as that's preempted by the Communications Act federally, so.
So you're saying the FCC provides you guidelines on where to put towers, how close to residences?
This board can determine the site of those towers. I understand that's kind of what you're arguing here, but specifically with regard to the environmental effects, yes, the Federal Communications Act preempts us from having a decision based on that specifically.
Well, if you'll look into, yeah, I don't know the exact safe distance for residents, but you can find that if you want to go and research it yourself. There's...
Also, the case that gives...
Yeah. Right. We had two questions.
No, that was it. Our attorneys responded for us. Thank you both.
Okay.
Thank you, Mindy.
Good morning, Commissioner. I represent PowerNet Wireless at 3029 West Borghardt.
Yes, sir.
First to answer, this is not cellular...
State your name, sir.
Could you please state your name?
Yes.
Michael Strain, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
It's not cellular. It's not 3G, 4G, 5G. The G in those technologies, you know, references to generation, not the gigahertz of bandwidth that they're talking about. So everything that was said there has really nothing to do with what's on this tower. What they're referring to are the towers next to the, like the neighborhood Walmart just up the street from us, the monopoles where they have the different cellular carriers. We're not doing that. We're simply taking a data stream from our office and sending it to four towers outside of the C limits that are producing broadcasts for network connections. So we're not wide broadcast, we're just simply repeating a signal from our office and sending it out of town. Everything we have on the tower is FCC-approved, and we have licenses for all of that. We went through all of the requirements they had and met everything, and we have, you know, all of that for 10 years at this location, so. Any questions about what we're doing or how we're doing it, or?
I don't think so.
I mean, at 35 feet, which is approved, we can do the same thing. We would just lose a Grape Creek site and then a site in Cristoville. So the difference between the 35-foot, which is allowed, and the 60-foot we're requesting just gives us the ability to get to those other two sites, so. As far as, you know, the equipment we have, you know, we need to keep that to keep the business running, so.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm going to close public comment. Anyone have thoughts they'd like to share or wish to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented, understanding, you know, the comments made, but as stated, that is not something for us to bring into this forum, so I'll make a motion to approve of multiple of these with Verizon.
Yes, sir.
And feel pretty good about it.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented by the staff. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six-zero. CU 2204, 224 West Avenue B. A request for approval of conditional use to allow short-term rental in the two-family zoning district located at 224 West Avenue B, being .14 acres.
This is CU 22-04, located at 224 West Avenue B, 0.138 acres. It is District 3 in the Fort Concho neighborhood. These are the vision and zoning maps for the property. It is zoned RS2, two-family residential, in the downtown vision plan. So 21 letters of notice were mailed out to the property owners within 200 feet of the subject property. One letter, or rather, email was received in opposition at property 14, the neighbors directly to the east of the subject property. These are images of the site. Looking east and west along the street. Ignore the title at the top. And so staff concluded an analysis based on the six criteria found in the Code of Ordinances. We found that this is a good site. It is within distance of downtown San Angelo. There are no other short-term rentals within 500 feet of this site, and there won't be any adverse effects to the site or to surrounding areas with the approval of this short-term rental. And thus, staff recommends approval of CU 22-04 at 224 West Avenue B, subject to three conditions of approval. The first condition is that the owner shall maintain all off-street parking on the premises in a manner consistent with Section 406. Actually, that's number three on their list there. Number one on the list is the property owner shall maintain the short-term rental operation in a manner consistent with Section 406 of the zoning ordinance. And the last condition is that the property owner is required to have a fire marshal inspection and building inspection for a change of occupancy to ensure compliance with the requirements of the conditional use.
All right. Rafael, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
You've, do you guys have a map of the locations of all of the short-term rentals that are approved?
We can get that? I don't know if we have that made.
We do have that on our GIS layer. It's not accessible to the public, but the planning division can provide it.
Okay. It seems like we've approved other short-term rentals in this neighborhood and proximal to this site. I'm not, I'm not a, I think we might want to revisit. I don't know where the requirement for 500 feet comes from, but that may be a discussion outside of this case. I'm just, based on what I remember seeing come through in the past, it seems like there may be some other sites that are already approved in this immediate area.
I think, planning staff, when we get the case, that's the first thing we'll look at, is is there anyone within 500 feet, and also, is the road 30 feet wide? And if it meets those two minimums, we move forward, so.
Okay.
We've verified that. The bigger picture item, we could certainly discuss it. I know it's something council had approved when they passed that ordinance in 2014.
Okay.
But we can certainly discuss it.
No problem.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Rafael. Anyone else have questions for the staff? All right, we're going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this case, please come forward, state your name and address or single-member district. All right, we're going to close public comment. Anyone wish to make a motion or share their thoughts?
Make a motion to move forward as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve as presented by the staff. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six-zero. CU 2205, 3801 Green Meadow Drive. A request for approval of a conditional use to allow a renewal of a short-term rental in the low-rise multifamily residential zoning district located at 3801 Green Meadow Drive.
Thank you, Commissioners. Our next case today, 3801 Green Meadow Drive, District 6, Larry Miller in the Bottom neighborhood. This is a renewal of a short-term rental that you all had approved back in, I believe it was 2020, so, or excuse me, 2021. So this, if you approve this one, this time it would be good for two years. This is for Ms. Laurie Padilla. The zoning on this property is RM1. It's a quadruplex, and basically, you have the four lots here, and then they share a common wall with the other three adjacent to the west, southwest, and south. 22 notices were mailed out. We did receive one letter in support from the owner themselves. They have two required parking spots on the property. And we make that distinction, too, because if you're counting up votes, obviously, the property owner generally would be in support versus, say, a neighbor. And let me actually correct that. Sorry, we did get a response from one of, and I believe it was a renter, either in 15 or 13 this morning. They didn't put their name, but when I checked the ownerships this morning before the meeting, her name didn't come up, so she was concerned about noise, and I guess staff's position is whether it's a long-term rental, more than 30 days or less than 30 days. I mean, they were built as fourplexes, so you can't help that you have a common wall, but we just wanted to put it in the record. It is one in support and one in opposition. So this is the neighborhood that you can see. It's commercial, or excuse me, a future PD that was approved but never built on the north side of Green Meadow, so that could be more apartments there already. So again, I know this is kind of a higher-density area, but they do have the two required parking spots, and this is a renewal, so there's none within 500 feet. So staff's recommending approval. They had some minor calls about, I think there were just some weed infraction and then a smoke alarm or something, but nothing major. The owner's been making sure that the property's been keeping up to par. The other thing to note is, she hasn't, even though she got the approval, she hasn't rented it out as a short-term rental. She's been renting it as a long-term rental, so that's the difference. So one of the conditions, I'll just basically move forward here, so we are recommending approval. Maintains the two parking spots was condition one, and then get the certificate of occupancy rather than getting any renewals. She'll have to get that as well as registering for the hotel tax, so she's still within the queue, kept it going, technically met the approval conditions, but she will need to fulfill in those steps now if she wants to rent it out for less than 30 days. This concludes our presentation.
Anyone have questions for the staff? Thank you, Jeff. All right, we're going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this case? All right, we're going to close public comment. Anyone want to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six-zero. All right, item F. CU 2206, 2701 Southwest Boulevard. A request for approval of a conditional use to allow wholesale trade in the general commercial zoning district located at 2701 Southwest Boulevard.
All right. Thank you, Sylvester. This has moved on pretty quick today. This is our last case, conditional use 2206. So this is for Tractor Supply, and I'll do my best to explain this as succinctly as possible, so it's clear, because it, when I sent out the staff report, too, there was a lot of, some of the changes that were happening on this property. Basically, they got an approval way back in 94. It was an old warehouse building, and Tractor Supply's been there ever since. When they first got the approval, it only applied to take this property and slice it in half, so you have Tractor Supply up here and then Hobby Lobby down here. So they were limited just to the north half of this property, north of this line, and their storage was also very limited in that area. So now they want to come in, they still want to add more storage up in this half, but now they're going to go beyond the 10% in the CG zoning district. So to clean this up, we just thought, let's just bring them forward as a conditional use that will, will have a condition. They'll have to go back to council to nullify the old special permit in 94, but the conditional use allow, it's called warehouse and freight, so it's to allow basically some retail, but also the heavier tractors versus a traditional retail establishment, as well as allowing them to approve the storage component. So that's what this is today. Zoning CG. 18 notices were mailed out. It's a pretty commercial area. None responded. They did provide a concept plan in your file, so to explain, the 94 approval was the area in green, orange, and yellow. That's what they approved for. They limited the outdoor storage to just within that area here. Now they want to add the purple and some parking for that storage in the red, so this is what's being added. They're also losing a little bit of the yellow with the greenhouse that they've got a building permit in for, so that's going to punch some of their storage away. Even then, it's not a complete one-for-one swap. I'd say it's about maybe 50% more, 60% more outdoor storage when you take this area in here. A lot of that area is already covered out there, maybe shouldn't be, but it is. So this would clean that up if you all approve that today. Here's a close-up of it, so they're proposing, keep what's in the yellow, keep what's in the green, but add the purple and the red. These are some material samples the applicant provided from other properties. My understanding is the outdoor storage will have a mesh fence. I don't believe it'll be roofed, though, but it will have a mesh gate on it. This was the original approval, so again, now they're, to get to the 10%, since the ownership tract actually goes down and includes Hobby Lobby, they would be within the 10% even if they add the outdoor storage. See, these are some of the pictures. So there's the storage in the front, and then this is roughly where the new storage would go, and as you can see, they've already have it out there today. We reviewed the conditional use in accordance with the zoning criteria. The additional outdoor storage, up to 10%, is allowed in the CG. The Tractor Supply store has been there since 19... The Tractor Supply store has been there since 1994, complies with all zoning and parking as well. When they add up that outdoor storage, they're still over, well overparked. And then the fencing around the storage will ensure traffic safety and proper maintenance so that stuff just doesn't get blown around into the parking area. So we are in support of the request with four conditions of approval. The underlying zoning is CG, so they conform with the CG standards. If they're providing any lighting, it's fully shielded, which they're not right now. Applicant should obtain all required permits from permits and inspections. They are going through that process for their greenhouse. And prior to new development, council action is required to revoke the special permit, which this conditional use will replace. So belief staff would bring that as an action item to council probably as soon as possible if you all approve this today. Any questions or comments on the presentation?
I have a few questions. I'm actually kind of confused. What was, can you explain the current zoning and what's allowed on this site? And are they in compliance with that zoning today?
They're not because they've added the storage without an approval, so they're coming in today for the approval. So the current, what's currently allowed is basically from the tractors, so this is north up here.
Yes.
So it's this line forward is the property that was approved for the special use and only for the area.
And what is the special use?
Special use was to allow the same thing, warehouse and freight.
Okay.
So same thing as now, but only in the yellow, orange, and green area, not the purple and the red. This approval today would allow the purple and the red and apply the conditional use to the whole site, including Hobby Lobby, to get so that they stay under 10% of outdoor storage.
So the request is to allow us, or to allow this applicant to have warehouse and freight use for the entire site, not just the Tractor Supply location? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
But the entire site would have to meet the 10%?
That's correct.
Yeah, so if Hobby Lobby were to start putting stuff outdoors, it would, they'd have to work together to meet the 10%.
Okay.
That's, Mr. Verneaux is correct. And if you take a look at, I know this is hard to see on the drawing, when they add this in, if you end up approving this today, Hobby Lobby really wouldn't be able to because they're at 9.92, so they're almost 10% when they add this area here. So essentially, they max out.
Okay. Anyone else have questions for the staff? All right, we're going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this case, please come forward, state your name, single-member district.
Good morning. I'm Karen Hesse-Smith, and I'll just go ahead and give you a disclaimer. I'm still a little bit unclear, but I do want to say that this is, if I understand it correctly, predominantly a retail area. Yes?
Yes, correct.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
And it sounds silly, but adding more behind a simple mesh fence of things that are potentially flapping around, stacked in piles, doesn't seem consistent with the appearance of that part of town. There are better parts of town for them to perhaps allow that function. Do they not have a commercial, new commercial building up on the north side?
They do.
Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
So I think I'm just concerned with gradual erosion of what is existing in terms of appearance. That's it.
Thank you.
And just speaking objectively on this, you would have the opportunities, if you were in support of this, to add any conditions you wanted to for aesthetics. So whether that's a screened area or not, I think, or has it, the trade-off is if you screen it, then it's a very narrow turn in there, but at the same time, Ms. Hesse-Smith makes a good point about, you know, the outdoor storage. So you guys would have some options if you wanted to.
Okay. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on public comment? All right, I'm going to close public comment.
I'm assuming it's going to be similar to what ACE has. Like, they've got a gated area that has patio furniture, fertilizer, that kind of thing, maybe trailers, because I think Tractor Supply sells trailers, anything that could need to be locked up in off-business hours, I would assume.
I don't know about the ACE location. They may not be in compliance with what they're doing. But I went out and looked at this site, and I actually went up to the new location that they've got on the north side of town. The way I see this, it's a, this is a commercially zoned area, and we've got a building that really doesn't comply with the intended zoning of the space that it's occupying. And they've now kind of bent the rules to include the entire square footage of the area and the Hobby Lobby to expand the yard space that they want to expand into, into this parking lot. It's, if you go by and look at this, they're taking the first four rows of parking on the north side of this site and going out to the property line on southwest. There are homes about half a block down the street from this. There's an oil change place and a small business directly across the street, but you don't even get through the rest of this retail parking lot before you have the sides of homes that abut this property. They have trailers, they have fertilizer, they have, they have mulch and other bagged materials that's sitting on pallets out in the parking lot. It's really, to be completely honest with you, it's kind of junked up the front of the building. And I, that's not the, that's not the intended use of this location when it was developed, and I don't think that it looks appropriate now. The yard that they have up against the building has a chain-link fence around it, and it has kayaks and water storage tanks and hay bales and a myriad of things. It just looks, it looks kind of junky. It looks like a warehouse-type use in a commercial district. Personally, I'm not in favor of expanding the storage out into the parking lot, and I understand the limitations of this space, but I think that if Tractor Supply wants to occupy this space, they, maybe they can't do in this space what they might do in a freestanding location that's in a more commercial, heavy commercial-type district. So those are my views.
So they've been there for 28 years. They took over Hobby Lobby and Tractor Supply originally was Walmart. First Walmart we had in San Angelo. They do have a lot of farm and ranch. That's what they sell, our fertilizer.
Yes, ma'am.
Feed.
Absolutely.
Everything else. That is what they're in business to do. And there's a lot of people that come there for, you know, from the west. We do have the new store that's out north of town, and that's going to, that does a really good business so far, I think. And we have a lot of barns and everything that are out there, and as far as the rodeo coming in, it'll be a great thing. However, you know, since they are, in my opinion, since they are short of space, I can see that they do need more outdoor space, and maybe we can, you know, with the fencing or whatever, instead of the, what did you call it, Jeff, that they were talking about?
I should have just said chain link, but I said mesh, but like a chain.
Okay, chain link. Okay. You went back to Canadian talk. Yeah. Okay. Chain link. So, you know, something like that. It doesn't, doesn't cover up the view, but it does keep it locked up and secure. So, and I don't, I don't know that they're going to use this storage forever. This may be something for spring and summer, because they change everything all the time. That's something we don't know. Anyway, I am not opposed to it.
Okay, so what's proposed is that we change or allow warehouse and freight use for this entire site. And the reason that it's been done that way is because they cannot comply with the outdoor storage with just the Tractor Supply location being incorporated into the square footage.
That's correct.
So why would we allow warehouse and freight storage for that entire site? That doesn't, I think that's a mistake. Again, I know that Tractor Supply's been there for a long time. They've already got outdoor storage. I don't know why they can't just work with what they've got and not come out into the parking lot and build a fence down to the street and take four rows of parking spaces out to do business there. That's, that's my personal opinion.
Jeff, could you show some of the other, your site pictures? I mean, I think one of their, where they're trying to really come into compliance, where they have some storage, outdoor storage now, where those trailers are.
Yeah.
And that's really only taken up, I think, one of those aisles.
That's right.
Their proposal is two.
Where those, where that pickup truck is, those parked pickup trucks on the picture on the right, the left side of that picture, all of that space gets put into the fenced-in area, where that pickup, where that black, go back.
Yeah.
So.
It's that last row, too.
The trucks that are in the immediate view in the front of that picture would be part of the fenced-off area that's proposed. It's a massive space.
Do you see maybe a smaller-size footprint for their fenced-in area or, you know, something like that? And I think, Jeff, you might explain the conditional use. It's because of the type of store Tractor Supply is and what they sell. So like Lowe's and Walmart that have similar things, I think they're under a different category. Is that right, Jeff?
That's right. So CG zoning right now is going to allow Walmart. It's going to allow any retail store where the, where you're selling basically anything, like clothes, accessories, fashions. The farm and tractor equipment, I guess because it's a little bit heavier, more bulky items, that in the zoning ordinance in San Angelo, that falls under another category called wholesale trade. And so really, what this is, it's allowing 90% of what they're doing is still retail, what a Walmart would do, but allowing those extra farm and tractor equipment. And so the underlying zoning would be 10%. If this was Walmart, they would be fine right now because they're already allowed in the CG district, and if you take both of those properties, you'd hit the 10%. And we would, I mean, I guess through site plan control, we could probably try and push building materials, but it'd be a lot harder. The conditional use is probably the opportunity to, if we want to do something on the screening we could.
And I understand your point about the distinction between the two. Tractor Supply sells bales of hay. They sell water tanks. They sell things that are not available at Walmart, even though Walmart sells a pretty broad variety of options and things. They don't sell everything that Tractor Supply sells.
Chairman, is one of your concerns that this conditional use, say Tractor Supply left, well, now they still have this warehouse.
Absolutely. That's definitely one of my concerns. And now we've got a massive amount of square footage that we've allowed this broader, more intense use, and it's, again, that there's homes that are right down the street.
Is the conditional use that you would leave to the current ownership, not necessarily the property itself? Am I mistaken?
I think all conditional uses go with the property unless there's a condition that it expires or is withdrawn if the business leaves. If there's, is that a condition?
Maybe that's what I'm thinking, because if Tractor Supply would relocate, I would assume that the conditional use allowing them that storage space would therefore.
So what, another option, and I'm just, we still have to deal with the screening and whether you think it's compatible or not, but under the zoning ordinance, sales of farm and ranch supplies and/or equipment is classified as wholesale trade. It doesn't include the whole category. So if you're concerned about other types of wholesale trade, like warehouse or some sort of distribution center, which in some ways generates less traffic, but then more traffic at times, you'd have the larger trucks coming in. But if you're worried about that, you could just say, I don't know if we could do that, Brendan, because we've advertised as wholesale trade, but if it's just a subsidiary of it, they could make the approval, I would think, for a subsidiary of that, because it's not asking for more than what was noticed. So it's just farm and ranch supply sales would be allowed for the conditional use. And the CG would still allow everything else anyway. That way, you're not allowing everything in wholesale trade.
I mean, I get where you're coming from, Travis, having maybe the, I mean, it does span a very large part of that parking lot, so maybe we can look at addressing the size of it, not having it go so deep. But I'm looking at as, you know, if we don't go forward with this, we are not allowing the business itself to grow and expand, which is providing money into the San Angelo economy, especially with people from out of town coming in, and they specifically go here. Now, if Tractor Supply, because they wouldn't be granted this, maybe they look at a new location, what is that going to do to that plaza? I mean, you're solely relying on Hobby Lobby supporting an entire plaza.
I don't agree with that. Time Clock Plus is at the other end of this, and it's, the space that they occupy functions more as office space than anything.
They're mainly working remotely.
But they occupy a massive amount of, don't they have, don't they own a big chunk of this shopping center?
I mean, they bought where Multi-Chem is, but, I mean, we're talking about retail sales when people actually are physically going, I mean, they are going to their office to work. I mean, you've got two businesses that are selling commodities.
Right.
And that's where I'm looking at that as a standpoint, is I just feel like if we...
And I'm not opposed to Tractor Supply staying where they are. I just don't think that expanding into the parking lot in an area that's really prominent when you drive by, when you pull up, certainly go into the boundary of the street with a fenced-off area to put trailers and pallets of fertilizer on. It just doesn't fit.
Depends on what you're shopping for. If you're shopping for trailers and fertilizer, you would go there.
That's not the intended use of this location. There are other parts of San Angelo, there are other parts of Sherwood Way where I think that this would work great. This location is half a block from homes, and I don't, I don't think that the folks that purchased homes in this neighborhood were expecting a wholesale trade with warehouse and freight use on the retail that was across the street.
That's been there for 28 years.
Right. But why are we expanding the?
Demand.
We're expanding the use of this land, of this, of this area. We're, you add the Hobby Lobby into this mix, why would you allow warehouse and freight at this location?
Other than, other than in the holidays, what, I mean, that parking lot sits empty. There's, no one parks all the way down there.
Right.
Very few, let's just say that. And the way that property is positioned, it's a little challenging for that business. They've got that side area for storage, but it's not like they can expand that way because you've got an access point over to Sherwood. They don't have behind-the-building space in order to expand. So really, I mean, their only option is to move forward, and I just don't personally see it as an issue.
Okay.
But that's my opinion.
Okay.
Could you go back? Sorry, Jeff. Could you go back to the concept plan so they can kind of look at the dimensions? Thank you.
Yeah, if you didn't approve this, and then Hobby Lobby, which is just retail, wanted to add storage in front of their property, there wouldn't be a, they wouldn't need to come here for a conditional use. They would be able to, I believe that's correct, they would, because they're already allowed under the CG zoning, so if it's not up there, they could do the same thing on that property.
That's not what you said earlier. You said that the Tractor Supply square footage was the only area that was allowed the special use.
It's one property, isn't it?
In CG zoning. And now you've come to us and included the Hobby Lobby square footage in a request to allow this wholesale trade on the entire tract. Is that not accurate?
It's one property.
I asked a question of our staff.
No, no, it's okay. And I apologize if I, I want to correct, correct, so I make it clear as well. In order for them to do outdoor storage, because they're not in allowed use in the zoning, you have to take Hobby Lobby and Tractor Supply as one property to, for them to, and then they can get 10% of that overall site.
Okay. In 1994, when this was approved, what was approved?
In 1994, it was just the green, orange, and yellow area, and it was only, and you took the, which was still within 10%, but it was now, because it's smaller, it was within 10% of the Tractor Supply portion of the property. And so now, in order for them to get more outdoor storage, they have to add the Hobby Lobby portion in terms of outdoor storage, if that makes sense. So see where that boundary line was, so that it kind of stopped right where Hobby Lobby was? So they are technically expanding in terms of what we're counting as out... So they are technically expanding in terms of what we're counting as outdoor storage. We're now taking the entire property to get them to the, so that they can get the 10%.
And that, and that change between '94 probably happened in 2000, when the new zoning ordinance was approved, which is why the conditional use is required to do anything different. Is that correct? I mean, I know that's not, I know we had a zoning change in 2000 for the entire city. And I think that's where the changes happened of, all right, well, back then, there was a special use that required this. Now it's a conditional use that requires this. And the conditional use rule says you got to look at the entire property tract, not the individual business, because they are owned by the same owner. I mean, they're not individual properties.
Yes, it's one tract.
And that's where we have to consider them both at this point.
Yeah, I think Aaron's right.
So if we did nothing, what's allowed?
So if you did nothing, the, they wouldn't, they wouldn't be able to add outdoor storage because there are, they would exceed the 10, sorry, they wouldn't be able to add more outdoor storage because they would be exceeding the 10%, okay?
Is that just of farm and ranch supplies, or is that of any type of merchandise?
Just for farm and ranch supplies.
So they could put?
Well, no, no, sorry, for, okay, for everything. But the original approval only applied to north of that line, and for wholesale trade only.
But if I'm understanding what you guys are saying, under CG,
Yep.
For the entirety of the, this complex, 10% of that square footage could be used for outdoor storage.
Correct, correct.
Which would be far more than what they have now, when you take the entirety of the location.
Yes. The problem is, right now, they're limited to, wholesale trade is limited to the north half of the property.
Because of the type of products that they sell.
A special permit.
That's what the special permit allowed them to do.
That's right.
Was put the farm and ranch products out, in addition to the other things that they would have been allowed to put in the parking lot.
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah. So in other words, if you want to do more outdoor storage, you have to come here and get a conditional use, so that we can apply the 10% to the entire property, remove the special permit, and now move that line all the way down. So they have to choose one or the other. They can stay with what they have right now, and they wouldn't need to come here. But if they want to get more outdoor storage for wholesale trade, it's got to apply to the whole property.
Or they could just change what they have in the parking lot.
Yes.
Are they required to fence off what's in the parking lot?
No, they're not.
Okay.
The only rule on outdoor storage in that area is they need to be 15 back, 15 feet back from the street, which they're well beyond that.
Well within.
The screening measures are really up to y'all. And if, let's say they were just Walmart, and they didn't need to come here at all, and they were putting in some outdoor storage, we could still require those things at site plan approval, but we'd have a harder time getting it, because as of right now, screening is, screening of outdoor storage is not a requirement of the zoning ordinance in general. It's only, can become a requirement of another process, like a conditional use or a special use.
Okay. We can, yes, I will close public comment.
Jeff, can you pull up the conditions of approval again? I'm going to motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Okay.
Question. Fenced or non-fenced?
I think the fence is probably.
I think it's required to be fenced, according to the, oh, is it not on, I thought that was part of your condition.
No, that would be up to y'all if you wanted to add a screening requirement.
I think that it should be up to the applicant, honestly. I mean, because again, like, they've got trailers out in the parking lot that are all chained together. Maybe they don't need a fence. And, I mean, site-wise, it would look better without a fence, but it's going to depend on the applicant on what type of product they're going to put out there.
We can make that a condition, at the very least, that it, there's, whatever type of fence you want, that they do that. And I think staff would agree with that.
So no, that's not, that's not, that's not in the motion?
No, I'm going to approve, or make a motion to approve as presented by staff.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve as presented by staff. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. So is that, let's do a show of hands in favor. Three, and opposed, three.
It does not, does not pass.
Does not pass.
Are there any other motions that we're taking?
Anyone else wish to make a motion?
Can we move, can we make a, take a motion at table for further discussion, so we can look at it again?
I don't think so. I think they can take it to city council, and city council can vote on it.
Yeah, I agree.
They can appeal it and go to city council.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's, I prefer that anyway.
Yeah, the applicants would have to appeal for it to get to city council, but yeah, they have that option.
Okay. So the 3-3 vote can stand, and we can move forward?
Yes. Can I take one minute to look at one, one thing? I want to look at the bylaws, because I think it says where there's a tie, there's no recommendation made to council.
And what complicates this a little bit is it's a conditional use that usually does not go to council, does not need council approval. So this is really the board, the commission that.
Yeah, and it's not really a denial.
Right. So give us just a few minutes, and we'll.
It is a tricky one.
It's a challenging.
It does.
Yes.
Okay, so the bylaws say on any matter that the planning commission offers a recommendation, recommendation to city council, a tie vote by the planning commission shall be forwarded without recommendation to the city council for approval or disapproval. So I guess the problem is, this doesn't usually get forwarded unless it's a denial where they can appeal.
But this is a denial in the aspect that?
Yeah, so it's not approved. So it is a denial.
It is a denial.
So, I mean, I think the applicants could appeal it. I mean, if you can't come up with a motion one way or another, you can't, so.
Okay.
So does it not automatically go then?
No, they have to appeal it for it to go to council. Otherwise, it just, yeah, it didn't get approved, so.
Okay. So they will be notified, Jeff? Tractor Supply will be notified?
Correct, yes.
All right, directors report.
Don't have a whole lot, since John is out today. Sorry y'all get second best, but here I am. We do have a couple of things that will be coming forward. I know one that will be coming forward that we presented to development task force three times, which is the commercial site plan process. And it's really just consolidating our site plan information throughout our zoning ordinance and some other ordinances that are out there and saying, all right, this is how the city does commercial site plans. It allows a site plan to be done before the building commercials, the building plans are done. And they get, I believe it's 18 months of getting to vest those rights. So if things change, they still get to say, okay, well, we did the site plan back at this date. Most cities do that to help commercial development move forward, to understand what happens for the site. And Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, but you're working on the historic overlay. Have y'all set any timeline for that? I don't know if that's coming to this board next month, or if that's just a possible opportunity for some public meetings.
Yes, we have a tentative date next Wednesday, March the 2nd. We'll be sending those mailing notices probably today. And just, that's basically that Chadburn commercial project that will be coming forward. It's gone to DHRC for their blessing and city council. It'll be coming back to you all for review. And a lot of those, some of those properties, not a lot, but some of them are already historically designated. So what that's going to do is, a lot of that Chadburn corridor downtown, from about Fourth Street down to the Concha River, is going to need, they're going to need a historical approval before they make any exterior construction in the future. And if they already are in the downtown and in the historical, historical is the stronger one, they'll just need the one application fee instead of having to do two, since we're reviewing the same thing. So that'll hopefully protect some of those buildings and the property values of those properties downtown.
Okay.
Yeah. It's creating a historic district in the downtown officially. And so that's, that's our main goal, so.
Okay.
Other than that, if y'all have any suggestions about training, obviously you talked about short-term rental, that you might like to see something back on that. We'll try to see how many cases we have, if that's something appropriate to bring back in March, or if we need to move it to April to talk about, here's our map of where short-term rentals are. And I was, as I was thinking that, you know, we talk about that one-year renewal process, then there's a two-year process. And I'm hoping things don't fall off the map, just because the two-year, they didn't, they didn't renew, but they may still be in operation. So maybe there's some things we look internally of, how do we, how do we communicate that to our applicants?
Yeah. The only question I had about the ordinance was the 500-foot requirement.
Yeah.
And I didn't know if that was a product of the planning commission, or if the city council added that.
We can research that, but I know it's in our, it's codified in our ordinance, but we can research on where that came in.
So there was a research team that worked on the STR ordinance, and then all of that was brought to city council, and they voted on it and tweaked it the way that they thought.
Okay. Yeah, great. Thank you, Terry.
So the only question I have is, is why, why would we have a 500-foot requirement? Why can't we have short-term rentals within 500 feet of each other? There are some areas that I think they would fit better than others. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was going to say, I sat on that, I sat on that board. So the thought was not to have an STR everywhere.
Okay.
So they would be scattered around the city. They couldn't be closer than 500 foot, just to have a little bit different variety, instead of just one whole section or everybody.
Concentration.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That was the thought process.
I do, I do think there might be a recommendation that we're looking at, we have to research it, of what about the central business district?
Yeah.
If you're in building A on Chadburn, but someone at the end of the block wants to do a short-term rental, does that make more sense than a single-family residential area? But we need to do research on that, and we will probably bring something forward if we think, let's, let's try to do something, something for certain areas, maybe not citywide.
Okay. The next item is future meeting agenda and announcements. The next regular meeting of the planning commission is scheduled to begin at 9:00 AM on Monday, March 21st, 2022. Adjournment. See, one wish to make a motion?
So move.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six, zero. It's 10:46.
Thank you all.
Thank you.